Six o'clock, now call the meeting to order. If you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll please remain standing for the invitation by Pastor Hunt.
Good evening, my name is Bruce. I'm the pastor of Grace Church on Pelham and Allen Park resident as well. I want to share a scripture passage before, just to keep, we can pray for this. In scripture, there is no word for refugee. It's, there's a lot of different words, strangers or foreigners, but this is what it says. It says, "Do not neglect to show hospitality to strangers, for thereby some have entertained angels unawares." And I just share that with the refugee situation in Europe. And so, let us pray. Good and gracious God, we thank you for being the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. You are sovereign over every situation, you're sovereign over our lives. What we pray for, the situation in Eastern Europe. We pray for the refugees, the displaced people, and what is going on. Your word says, blessed are the peacemakers, they shall be called sons of God. We pray for all the peacemakers in that region right now. We pray for cities that are very similar to Allen Park in Ukraine. We pray for their safety, we pray for their safety of their city officials. We pray for the safety and protection of our city officials here, and protection of our fire and police. And we just pray that you watch over the members of city council and their families. We pray protection over and peace over the whole city of Allen Park as well. We pray that it continues to be a great place to live, learn, work, worship, and play. Lord, we thank you that you are sovereign. And we do lift up all these refugees. Our hearts goes out to them and we just thank you for all the people that are, that are over there ministering to them with practical needs. We thank you, it's in Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
All right, if you'll call the roll, please.
All right, Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schlag.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Mayor Prokdam Lally.
Here.
Mayor McCloud.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlag.
In support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of February 22nd.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valerius. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion has carried. Organizational business.
Good evening.
Much better, much better looking than Mark.
Definitely a little bit more hair. So stepping in for Mark tonight, I'll let everybody know what's happening in the city. The police and fire departments have staff members that have begun staff and command school. Lieutenant Jeffrey Hatta in the fire department, and Sergeant Eli Fattilia and Officer Steve Seagress from the police department. Also in the police department, Officer Bellnap will be completing the FTO program later this week, and Officer Rogers will be completing it late next week. The lead replacement program is beginning next week. The program is currently funded through the Financially Distressed Cities Communities Grant. Homeowners effective have already been notified by the water and sewer department. I believe this is 20, 20 leads? Forty? Forty lead leads. Great Lakes ACE Outdoor Storage was approved administratively on March 1st and will go through September 12th. There is no change to the previous three years. The home sale inspection program began on March 1st. Homes listed as of March 1st will be required to receive a certificate of occupancy. Please see the building department if you have any questions. The library has a weekly knit and crochet program on Thursday nights from 6:00 to 7:30. There is also a monthly book discussion group. They will be meeting on March 15th to discuss The Heirloom Garden by Viola Shipman, and on April 19th, they will meet to discuss The Late Show by Michael Conley. The next edition of Allen Park Today goes out the week of March 14th. And then finally, a big congratulations will go out to the Allen Park Competitive Cheer Team on their third consecutive state championship. I know Mr. O'Reilly is pretty excited about that. It's kind of a big deal, they work incredibly hard. Also, congratulations go out to Nathan Roberts, who plays fourth at the state bowling tournament. Santana Ramon on his sixth place wrestling finish at states. Adeline Tuccini on her fifth place wrestling finish at states. And Adeline was also the first Allen Park High School female wrestler to place at the state competition. Also, kind of a big deal. She is, and she's a freshman, so I believe Councilman Lloyd has a nice little prodigy to moan.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions on tonight's report?
Thank you.
If not, may I have a motion to accept and file?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valerius. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, motion is carried. We now have the public comment section of tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to come up and comment may do so. Simply give your name and the street on which you live, not the address. You are limited to four minutes and all that we ask is that you be kind.
I'll try. My name is Greg Leuschinger, I live on Balfour.
I'm sorry, Greg, what was the line?
Leuschinger.
Leuschinger.
Yeah.
Move on.
Balfour.
Thank you.
I don't know who to go to in the city, but I'm here to talk about the orange bags that get thrown on our lawns Friday nights, Saturday mornings. I live across the street from a couple of houses that people don't pick them up. There's, at any given time, 25 to 30 of these things on the lawn. I take them out of the drains in the street that are all clogging that up. I don't know if that's a license or a permit. Can we opt out? I don't know what to do, so I'm coming to the city council to try and figure this out.
If, I think there's a sheet of paper up there, I hope. If not, I would like to get your email address. This comes from the Detroit Free Press, and I don't mean to cut you short on this, but this has come up periodically. There is a number to be contacted where people are supposed to call and say, "I don't want to receive this," to opt out. It's nothing that's licensed, it's nothing that the city has control over. I've got a history on that going back where one community, I think it was Orion Township at one time filed a lawsuit, and that became a big mess and didn't go through the courts. It's something where you contact them, tell them to opt out. It does get to be a nuisance, I understand what you're saying. I sometimes periodically pick them up as I'm walking along. It's done mostly for people who do not have a newspaper subscription. They do it so that they can get their coupons. Some people like it, obviously, some people don't.
So what do I need to do? This, this right here?
Yes.
Okay, and just fill this out and give it to you?
Yep. Or just leave it here at the end and
Perfect.
I'll get back to you and give you the information. And we may even get back to posting that on our Facebook page so more people have it.
That'd be great, thank you for helping.
You're welcome.
You know, hey Greg, it's public comments, so we're kind of freestyle here, but Greg is the realtor who assisted us on the sale of DPW building.
Oh.
And he did a very good job on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And he really stayed on the purchaser, because as everyone know, it took a long time, so. I just want to recognize him for that.
Oh, thank you. Very much appreciate it.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
I'll just stop by and pick those bags up.
Let me know when you're going up on.
Well, if there's no one else coming up, we'll close the public comments and move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we have claims and accounts and a payroll report under purchasing. And under finance, we have the finance overview, budget to actual report, balance sheet, and cash flow. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Schlag. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, motion is carried. Resolutions. Resolution one is to approve the contract with Pitney Bowes for the postage machine and letter opener at a cost of $357.68 per month. This is being made at the request of the treasurer's office, and my understanding is that actually, the combined cost is less than what we had been paying. Are there any questions? We have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lally. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, that motion is carried. Resolution two is to approve the DPS director to purchase the CityWorks software program from Azteca Systems through a three-year contract in the amount of $93,306.55. And Mr. Murray will step up and tell us what this is all about.
Good evening. CityWorks is a software program that the DPS, water, sewer, and mechanics garage or mortar pool uses for our organizational tickets and things, for work orders, for asset management, pretty much all of our stuff keep record of. We've had it since 2015. This is the first time we're having a rate increase since 2018. So we're asking for a three-year contract at a rate of 5% this year, increase 3% over the next two.
Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, all, may I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lloyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, motion is carried. Resolution three, resolution to approve the police department to purchase 16 Brother rugged jet printers with accessories, mounting hardware, and extended warranty in the amount of $15,009.80 with funds from the state forfeiture account.
Make a motion.
I second.
I second by Mr. Valerius. Questions? Mr. Chief Egan will briefly fill us in on what this is for.
Our current printers don't, aren't compatible with our new software system. They were getting old. However, in order to be able to print tickets in our cars for officer's safety, for technology, and also help the court streamline, we're looking at replacing all of them and having one spare. So we're also looking at getting the additional three-year warranty on top of the two-year manufacturer warranty, so we shouldn't have to worry about it for at least five years. And it'll, it will come out of state forfeiture funds.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I thought it was one year of additional warranty. So it's actually three-year additional warranty.
Two-year additional warranty.
Five years total. Five total.
We start with two, and you're buying, are we starting with two or starting with?
We have a two-year warranty, a two-year manufacturer, and we're getting an extra three years, so. Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, that motion is carried. We are now at council comments, and this evening's first speaker is Mr. Blevins.
All right, first. Woo! All right. First off, thanks for coming out. Happy International Women's Day. Many holidays coming up as well, Sunday, daylight savings time, so make sure you move your spring forward. So spring is almost here, no more winter and, but, but, um. Also, next week, St. Patrick's Day, wearing all green for that, and hoping that in the future, we can start our baseball season stuff, so that's why I'm wearing this tie. Hope everyone stays safe for St. Patrick's Day as well. Again, there are plenty of ways, if you don't feel like driving, there's plenty of ways to get home if you're out drinking. Uber, Lyft, call a friend. Congrats to all the high schoolers on their accomplishments and everything at the high school. There's also supporting the arts at the high school this weekend. They are having their musical this weekend, and as well as the Cabrini High School as well as having their musical, so please go, keep supporting the arts in our city and the students. Please make, stay optimistic. Again, you don't know what everyone's going through in their personal lives, and especially what's going on in this world. Just, just stay, uh, just be happy what you have every day and what, what, like, when you wake up every morning, just be thankful. And with that, I hope everyone has a good few weeks. And with that, God bless and I yield.
Thank you. Councilman Marcos.
I'll keep it very short, I think everybody knows what's going on in the world today and want to keep, keep talking about, because I'm sure everybody else will want to speak about it, so I'll let them. I did want to mention a former athlete from Allen Park from when I graduated in '68, named Jim Nolan. Passed away yesterday, 71 years old. Played football at the time for North Junior High, and then, of course, he was a Jaguar for three years, varsity. Great guy, well, you know, and I always have the saying that once an Allen Parker, always an Allen Parker. So it was a sad passing. So my sympathies to his family. Everything else, Charles said pretty much everything we need to be said, so. I thank, Greg, thank you for coming, appreciate it. I look forward to seeing more residents here, we really appreciate when you come. So please do come, and with that, I pass.
Councilman Lally.
I just want to thank everyone for coming here tonight, especially Greg. I didn't know you were the real estate man over at school, I like that. He belongs to the Knights of Columbus too, a good member. And a congratulations to the cheerleaders of Allen Park, especially the proud father over there, the deputy chief, fire chief. And congratulations to Adelina Tuccini. She's the fifth on the wrestling. I used to wrestle when I was in high school, a long time ago. I graduated in 1968 too, so tells you how old I am. And, uh.
It was the year I was born.
That's right. Anyway. Just cracking up with no pain, fake. All right, well, anyway, congratulations to the wrestling. I have to, I have to do, have something to say tonight. First of all, let me explain, I've got medals here, challenging coins. I hope the camera looks at this today. We are doing a fundraiser for the Thomas Brand Memorial, Vietnam Memorial, and beyond park, in Allen Park. I don't know when are we gonna open it up yet, but we are still in the works with our fearless leader, Pat Hawkins. Thank you, Pat, you're doing a good job. Once we get almost everything situated, we'll come back and give us, give you guys the details. It's with me, I forgot your name.
His name's Matthew.
Matt Mathieu Voladas and Charles Blevins. And what's really serious, I've got something to say. It's been on my mind for a long time, ever since this war started at the Ukraine. It bothers me. It bothers me to no end. I know what war is all about, and I'm pretty sure Matt Valerius knows too. It's not an easy task. And all those refugees, this guy is a Nazi. He's nothing but Hitler, over and again. You believe this, in 2022, we have people, bunch of people getting away from their homes, their houses, and going almost naked to the other countries. You know, what we'd like to do, that's what I'd like to propose, but whatever happens, happens. This is the first time I'm going to mention this. And eventually, I will be talking to the Knights of Columbus, the American Legion, and the YOCS about this. What I would like to propose, through all the business, the bars, restaurants, and private businesses in Allen Park, all of this is just one thing. What I'd like to do is, where the register is, put a can, a can, say it, "Support Ukrainian survivors." The change, if you buy at the store, just put it in the jar. Instead of putting it in your pocket, put it in the jar. And the change does accumulate. Yes, we have to have a place to pour them, we have to have somebody to pick them up. That could be worked out later, because I know the Knights of Columbus doing this right now as we speak, and I'm going to present it to the Knights of Columbus in a different manner. They are doing this right now, and it's going right to Poland. The Supreme Director of the Knights of Columbus proposed this as soon as the war started. And Poland took it, took the ball by the hand, and they're working on it, so. It's all, all the Knights of Columbus are doing the same thing. So this is what I had in my, in my mind. And hopefully, that this goes out there, and eventually, we'll get, work together, and we'll find out where you got to send, the people that have the coin, the bucket, we'll let them know who picks it up with the identification, make sure it's the right thing. It's not one of those guys that go out there and take it and go home, no. We're going to make this illegal and the right things to do right now. We could do it, we should do it for every, every, like, tornado and all that stuff. I've been, you know, that's, and this is very difficult. They go midnight, there's no moon midnight. They don't have, they don't know when the bread, the next slice of bread is going to come. It's not, it's not, it's not easy to live like that. You know, so I would like to, I would propose this, and I'd like to see some support with the citizens of Allen Park. I want to thank you and good night.
Thank you, Tony. Councilman Lloyd.
All right. So it was a very big weekend for Allen Park, as far as high school competitions go. We already mentioned them, which I very much appreciate. In addition to Adeline and Santana, who we're both very proud of, we have four other members of the wrestling team. I'm being self, self-gratifying, but it's my time, and so here we go. So Brendan Peters as well, Jason Clark, Griffin Allwell, Jacob Campbell, and Jason Clark also competing at the state meet. Six wrestlers total, which is the most since the 1990s that we've had. In addition to that, we had Erica Lynn, a sophomore, competing at the Potra Out Loud competition at the state meet. She took fifth in the state in that competition. And we also had Allen Park and Cabrini students competing in robotics. We had Allen Park students that participated, and I believe it's called the Downriver Youth Orchestra, this past Sunday. And all of this, I think, speaks to the importance of extracurriculars. I think for the, for the vast majority of these students, these athletes, these members of performing arts, even our, our students that are going to be performing Mamma Mia, which I am very excited about, I'm a big fan of the music of ABBA and that particular play. For vast majority of them, this is, after their high school career, this is going to be kind of the end of it for them. But I think it speaks to all the hard work and dedication that the, the coaches and the community put into these athletes and these, these members of performing arts, is that it's not necessarily about, you know, winning a state championship, or, or placing in the state, or doing whatever it is. I think that if you talk to any coach, which I believe Craig, he's a coach as well, that, that the goal of any coach is to make upstanding members of, of the communities, to teach hard work and fair play and teamwork and communication, and all these things that are going to go on and serve these people, these individuals, long after their time competing is over. And I really think that those are the things that go on to make, you know, bedrock members of communities, bedrock, like, that make places like Allen Park and other cities amazing places, is that these, these student athletes, these individuals have these experiences to go out there. So a big kudos to all of our athletes, all of our coaches, that really work tirelessly, tirelessly, many of them. They, they work long, long hours. Again, I know Deputy Chief O'Reilly can tell you that as well. He is, he's connected to the Allen Park cheer team in more ways than he probably would care to be. But it, they, there's a lot of sacrifice that goes into it, so a very big appreciation to all those people that, that put that hard work into it. And this weekend was the payoff for all, so many of them. In addition to that, one thing that I have to say is, I had interaction with Officer Basile today, our Allen Park School Resource Officer, that I have to mention. Very positive experience. Unfortunately, as many, many of you might know, vaping is a, an epidemic amongst our youth. It's a very, very big problem. Unfortunately, Officer Basile spends a lot of time working on that, writing, handwriting tickets. But when he writes those tickets, the vast majority of the time, he works, and I, and I had an opportunity to see him work with a student today, and it was really amazing. The way that he sat down with this kid, right next to him in the desk, eye level, and, and was talking to him about the things going on with his life, talking about the things that are challenging him. And, and really kind of walking him through how, you know, this isn't like, you know, you don't have to pay a hundred bucks here, we, we can get you help. We can get you the services that you need. And to see him work with this young person, I, I think, is truly a testament to our, our police department. It's truly a testament to that relationship that the schools have built. I think that there has been a lot of, particularly school resource officers, has come under fire recently as to the role in schools and what that might mean. But I think that Officer Basile, today, in my interaction with him, exemplary member of the Allen Park Police Department, and an exemplary, a shining example of what that's supposed to be. And so I'm, I was seeing him work today, it really blew me away. I was very, very impressed. And I, this is gonna seem unrelated, but, but I really think it is. I know that we all are very upset. It's, it's difficult to turn on the news and not be upset with the things going on in the world. And those of you that know me, know that I'm not an incredibly religious person, but in, in times like this, with things like this going on in the world, I do find a great deal of solace in the serenity prayer, which many of you may know. It's like, God grant me the strength to change the things I can, the serenity to leave the things I can't, and the wisdom to know the difference between the two. And I think it's really easy in times like this to become overwhelmed with the things in the world, and many of which are completely beyond our control. But there are so many things within our community that are within our control. We can volunteer our time and be a coach. We can take a time like Officer Basile today and, and sit with a, a young man and try to put him on the right path. We can, we can donate to the refugees. I had a good friend that, that cleared out their closet in donating clothes to the refugees in Ukraine. So I, along with, I'm sure many of you have been distressed at seeing the things that have been going on around the world. And I, I would just encourage everybody to try to mentally divide those things. What are the things that we have power over, okay, and what are the things that we don't? And, and try to really focus your, your time and your energy into the things that you have power to change, the things that you have power to make a difference, and, and, and try to, you know, ask for some serenity to leave the things that we can't. And that I yield.
Thank you, Dan. Councilman Valerius.
Thank you for all that, Dan, you said everything I wanted to say, but I'll touch on it as well. As, as a high school teacher, like my fellow council member, it's, it's critical at, at times like these to understand, and as parents and everything else, to, to just touch base with your kids, check on them. We're seeing a lot of students at the high school level who are probably more affected by what's going on than what you'd want to think, despite the fact that they admit they don't watch the news and they could care less. What's going on is affecting them. I, myself personally, I've seen students who are scared about what may happen. And it's affecting them, their mental health, as well as, you know, the way in which they live and, and live their lives on a daily basis. So I think it's really critical just to focus on our youth and, and, you know, like, like Dan said, just assure them that, you know, some things we have no control over, and this happens to be one of them. But also, you know, reassure them that, you know, that, that it's But also, you know, reassure them that, you know, that, that it's not their fault in that, and, and help them through difficult situations. You know, here we've been battling COVID for two years, and now all of a sudden, we're faced with, you know, we have students talking about nuclear war and the end of days, you know, and it's troubling. It's, it's seriously troubling. So, on a lighter note, I, I, as a former, as a high school teacher and also former coach of various sports, you know, kudos to the parents of these kids who, not only to win a one-state championship, but to win back-to-back-to-back is phenomenal. I also want to send kudos out. I know Cabrini qualified, both their boys and girls bowling teams qualified for states. So, they were also bowling this past weekend in the state tournament as well. But congratulations to all those. As a Woodhaven teacher, I root for my school team, but as an Allen Park resident and council member, I, I definitely support and cheer for the Allen Park Jags, who had such a great showing this past weekend, for sure. Like I said, a lot of what, what's been said has been said. I just wanted to add in closing that there's one hundred and ninety-eight days till fall. With that, I yield my time.
The only, the only person who will be sad with the demise of one of them. Councilman Schlag.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, I just rubber stamp on copy paste with all my fellow colleagues have said. I guess I'll start by saying I'm wearing this purple tie today. That's a color for not only congratizing cancer that here on council that we definitely remember our fallen council member, but also it's a color for International Women's Day. I definitely want to congratulate all those athletes and those in performing arts that did so well this past weekend. I've seen all over the web and just blown away by that spirit. I hope it remains with them the rest of their days, as Dan said. I want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day, celebrates that holiday, and definitely, definitely if you are out celebrating and you need, don't get in behind the wheel, that's the worst possible you need to do. Just have a good time and celebrate the holiday. And I definitely with also my fellow veterans up here, especially Councilman Lally, talking about what happened, or is happening over in the Ukraine. As someone that has great-grandparent, great-great-grandparent, as my mother reminded me, that was born in the Ukraine, not Ukrainian descent, but born there, at least what was then Ukraine. Those boundaries have shifted so much over that period of time, over the last hundred-plus years. But I wish for a quick end of this violent conflict as soon as possible, and definitely will do what I can here as, again, my colleague has said, do what you can here. I mean, there's so many efforts that you watch TV, so what can I do? What can, there's always something you can do to support those in trouble and need. This is just one of many conflicts around the world, so definitely tears me up to see this, especially when I, I look at my young children. Yes, they're not nowhere near of age to go over and serve, but I want them to live to serve if they choose to when they're older and not think of the horrors that could happen. I mean, it wasn't far from ago when I strapped on boots and wondered if I would have to go serve. And luckily, I never had to go over into a war zone and serve in that capacity. That being said, I want to wish everyone a great night, and I know it's not easy going last or at least preceding Mayor, which, which hopefully she'll have something to say, as she always seems to find at least one nugget. So, with that, God bless, good night, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike, do you have anything?
Thank y'all for coming out tonight. God bless you and good night. Amen.
And yes, I'm always left with very little to say. It's always interesting listening to my fellow council members, they get different perspectives and, and have a realization of things that I never thought about or things that you're, you're viewing and, and all needs to be taken into account. And here we are in March, and according to the Library of Congress, March is the Irish-American Heritage Month, and as we've all heard, Women's History Month. And I was thinking, I wondered if tonight we were gonna be graced by Mr. Dennis Hayes, who would usually come in and regale us about Irish-American history and him being the marshal of the St. Patrick's Day parade, but I don't think he's in the vicinity right now. The, the, March today actually is the International Women's Day around the, the one day in the, in the month of Women's History Month that's specifically celebrated. And apparently, the UN usually comes up with a theme on that, which this year was Gender Equality Today for a Sustainable Tomorrow. But the International Women's Day website theme is Break the Bias. And this kind of fits in with some of the things that, that happened this weekend. The website explains the values of their theme as "A world free of bias, stereotypes, and discrimination. A world that is diverse, equitable, and inclusive. A world where difference is valued and celebrated." And how fitting that we should have a female wrestler in, in the month of March. I think we've, we've covered all the accolades. Again, reading about the cheer team for the third time, that's incredible. That's phenomenal. The robotics team was mentioned, and I understand they competed for the first time in two years at Kettering University and, and won the Most Creative Robot Award for that. I also found, in perusing through some things, that the Allen Park Drama won the Channel Four Award for Best Theater Group, and WDIV awarded the Best Goalie Award to Jack Miller, who is an Allen Park Jaguars freshman. So, we've got something to look forward to in that regard. With regard to the Ukraine, there are many organizations stepping up. There are many venues that you can show your support. And I'm sure that there are things we will do within our community. Our, our religious institutions will become involved. Just be careful what you're donating to, to make sure, because of course, the scam virus starts to come out. You have the American Red Cross and things that are known. I had a friend that I worked with whose husband is of Ukraine descent. In fact, his father was from the Ukraine. And on Facebook, she posted, "For my birthday, please donate." So, I did what I could. I think we should continue to do that. Dan mentioning his friend who cleared out the closet. We forget about things, something as simple as basic needs. And we can all say a prayer in any manner that we may do so and hope that things right themselves. And I think we can also contact our senators and our representatives and tell them how we feel about what is occurring and how strongly we hope that they will do something to be proactive before this spreads and becomes worse than any pandemic we ever saw. Because the reality is that the Ukraine might just be the first. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins, second by Mr. Schlag. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you all. We have adjourned at six-thirty-eight.